We'll call to order the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Hold on.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Akala?
Here.
Commissioner Mantila?
Here.
Commissioner Stazinski?
Here.
And one vacancy.
First up we have the, um, we have the WPTI Public Power Scholarship.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
(laughing). I need to add it back up.
Like the leaders to the flag, the United States of America, and choose a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. invocation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Heavenly Father, as we proceed through our meeting tonight, please guide us, help us to act in the best interest of all the citizens of Gladstone, and look the favor of God's. Now, we're at the WPTI Public.
We were notified this morning that the two recipients had a tennis match up. They're a member where North some, their high school tennis team, and so they're rescheduling that for the next week.
Perfect, perfect. Would you like to comment publicly, the podium's open, your comments for three minutes? And figure Damon.
Michael O'Connor, five twenty-six Minnesota Avenue. Just prior to the meeting, I handed out a picture of the alley behind Ninth South Tenth Street, and as you can see, there's an electric wire that's blocking the fire exit. That leads from the second floor down to the ground level, and as you can see, there's a cable, a service cable that has an insulator on it, and it would be, I think, well, it's required that it be moved. So I'm not sure what the requirement is, but if you could address that. I also have a handout, what's the procedure?
Go to the clerk. You can give it to her after your, your three minutes, or, oh, well, expire.
You'll need this, or else you won't know what I'm talking about.
No, thank you.
I know I'm wasted.
I saved one for you, Kim.
Thanks.
All right, as you know, we had a discussion at the last meeting concerning the electric fund, and what I just provided is the report. There was a thirty-page report on the electrical side, and this kind of goes through the details that I was looking at, and if you look at the back pages, it kind of goes through this. The electric rates are included on pages five, six, seven, eight, and twenty-two, and what they show on the first page is that there's a depreciation that's allowed, that's in the rate base, and that's to replace equipment that, of course, is worn out. Then we skip to... Oh, we'll have to skip to page twenty-two, that shows that the routine replacement cost is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we have about three hundred thousand dollars a year that's allowed replacement, and a hundred and fifty that's spent. So therefore, since there's more money providing the rates than is spent, money collects in the fund. So the electric fund is growing based on the money that isn't spent. Now, this is based on the depreciation schedule, which, as we know, a lot of equipment will last longer than what the normal depreciation is. So I think it's pretty well set up here.
Three minutes is up.
Oh.
Over time, in three minutes.
Okay.
Make your point quickly.
Well, no, if the three minutes is that, I mean, you, the details are in here, basically, that, that there's significantly more amount of money in the electric fund than is required, based on the study.
We appreciate this information, thank you for that, thank you.
I live to serve.
Any other public comment?
Can I give them my three minutes? Is that allowed? Okay, well, I want to do one minute anyways. Is this, is this the only time we can speak when it comes to position for the commissioner? Is this the only time? Okay, so we'll have time later?
This is public comment.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing my spot and being able to...
No, actually, there probably won't be any speaking tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna narrow the field, and at the next meeting...
Well, I want to speak tonight, though, that's the thing, I, I do want to speak.
You got your three minutes. Well, let me just clarify something, because you've given me mixed vibes.
You said that we would be able to speak.
Well, you're gonna guess, if you, you know, those that make it to the next step will speak.
Oh, so you're gonna oppress those?
No.
I mean, how, how can you clarify something if you don't speak publicly about the six people that are...
This is public comment, if you'd like to comment, please comment, but I'm not in the debate.
Okay. All right, maybe I'll try to get a couple points in now, then. Would you have any issues if the five or six people that are vying for the commission decided to meet, and we pick who our representative would be? I think that's a viable thing that we can do. I, I just want to throw it out there, it's just something that I thought of, because you got to remember, you have five people here. You shut him down for whatever reason, you don't like what he says, or you don't believe in what he says, but that's the attitude that comes out of here when you gang up on people. I've seen it happen time and time again. I had my wife fight my battles for three years, I'm back, and the only reason I'm back is because I care about the citizens and not oppressing their opinions. I have four pages of stuff, I went around and talked to ten citizens this week, just to get their just on what they thought was happening. They just, they, they love whatever, everything that's happening in the community, that's not the issue. They don't like when you turn away from the concerns that they have, and you make up your mind without even representing them. How many of you got emails from citizens and don't answer them? That's what they told me, you don't even, you'll send it to somebody else. Well, I'm sorry. I wish I had more time, but I sure hope you follow this policy with everybody that speaks.
Anybody else care to publicly comment? To begin with, other public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the city commission regular meeting minutes of April twenty-six, Parks and Recreation regular meeting minutes of April sixth, the EDA regular meeting minutes of March sixteen, and the city payment bills.
The only bill that we had was, um, usually happens once every year to, one of the bearings failed on one of the rotating biological contactors at the wastewater plant, and it's, it looks like a small job, it's just a bearing, but that bearing is around a six-inch shaft, and it's supporting tons of weight, and so Northern Machine and Repair has, they have built jigs and the needed equipment. They have done probably our last ten of them, and it goes really well when they do it. So that's what happened there.
Is that part, is that part of the, what they're looking to rebuild?
Yes. We, we had the bearing in stock.
Okay.
We're extremely happy the way things are, if you try to order something right now and have to wait for it, but...
Yeah, it'd be a problem.
Was that a scheduled repair, or was that a surprise?
It was, it was a surprise, but not a, not a surprise between the, the six biologists, you have twelve bearings, and usually, I mean, they, they get greased on a daily, they get checked, and the temperatures get checked, but it just, it usually happens when nobody's there at night on the weekends, and all of a sudden, you'll hear it start grinding, and...
So they, they had an indication that it was maybe going bad? I guess, you know, they're doing, they're just thinking, right, because, you know, my background with maintenance, preventive maintenance, right? So if they're degreasing them and temping them, does that generally give them an idea that it's kind of coming up? I was just, just kind of curious.
I guess, I guess I'd pass the question to Rodney.
And part of the reason I'm asking is because it's, it was a budgeted expense, right, so, or was that not budgeted?
I, I don't think this was budgeted, but it'll go under, under maintenance. He usually budgets knowing there's gonna be something happen with one of the discs, and...
Okay, cool, thank you. I'll make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Along with that payment of the bill?
Yep, that's, that's part of it.
Okay.
The motion by Commissioner Mantila, support by Commissioner Stazinski to approve the consent agenda.
I think it was the opposite, Mayor, it was moved by...
I get a backlash.
Yeah.
This Plexiglas kind of...
Yeah, echoey.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up, we have the applications and letters of interest for the city commission seat.
Yes, we have the, one, two, two, six people that have applied for the seat, I think all six are here.
What I, what I, the way this, the way I'd like this to work is that we would, we would pre-select some individuals, and then we would bring them back at the next meeting, where we would interview them, and then we would make them determination, and then we'd select for the open seat. I'd like to, like, dismiss, I would like to dismiss some of these because of applications not filled out, completely filled out. A couple of them, a couple of the people in here are part of an active proceeding, part proceeding, so...
Pending lawsuit.
Pending lawsuit, there's sort of, there's definitely a strong type of conflict interest there. And I think that really brings it down to, like, to two people that I would propose pre-selecting and bringing at the next meeting. And the two people that are Mr. Casey Leonard and Mr. Robert, I apologize if I don't think we're overcompensate. Any thoughts or discussion?
I just was wondering, you said the next meeting, could it be at our next regular meeting?
Next regular meeting, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the next regular meeting, and at that point, we would, we would select the candidates, and we would, they can square them in right at that meeting.
They'd be on the twenty-fourth?
I've got a question for that. Was this because they did not go all the way up the issue?
That would be Mr. Michael Connor, just attached the letter to, and all the, all the, put his name on it. Correct that on us. The other non-facial work, I went correctly, but there are various other issues that I think would prevent selection. Or anybody else, or the, or the two.
Well, we're not taking...
So when we, I know we did this when, I know when, when I was appointed, and went through the process, there was, we kind of did the same thing. We had three minutes or five minutes, or whatever it was.
We narrowed it down.
But there was six, there were six, three of us, I think, three or four of us showed up, but, I mean, I'd, I'd be open to, you know, you only get so much off of paper. I'd be open to letting them all speak, hearing what they got to say. As far as a conflict of interest, if that's, you know, that, that could be, that could be a factor, right? I mean, if we have, you know, if that precludes someone from being a commissioner, although it's documented in the city charter or something like that, then obviously, we have to go by that, I don't know that it does or not, you know, we can take a look. And I'd be open to listen, hearing whatever he had to say, establish a time limit, and do it orderly, and make a decision from that.
I personally would like to see if someone is, has not paid their special assessment, I would like to see them pay it under protest. They still have the ability for the lawsuit that they may be involved in, but if they did it under protest, at least they would be paying it, and then they're not in default to the city. That's just, I think, an option that maybe the city manager or city clerk could send a letter to them, you know, notifying them of that, and of the option of whatever else comes out of this conversation.
But there is the, 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 you know, certain old question here, are you involved in your personal, professional, business suit that would affect your ability to make fair and impartial recommendations of a member of the city advisory board or committee? I think that, you know, special assessments and stuff for the lawsuit would prevent something from being wrong.
Well, they, I think what would happen is, from my own personal experience, is that if, in fact, somebody were to be in that position, they would have to, pardon me? They would have to...
They want to know who Joe's afraid of.
I'm not afraid of anybody.
And all freedom and speech.
We are going to do that at our twenty-fourth meeting for the applicants that are approved for this evening.
So we're discussing it here, we're gonna do this.
Right.
Because I didn't hear my name in there, I'm not on that lawsuit, and I didn't fill that out, you know, with disregard, that's the thing.
That's right.
So, what are your names?
Well, we're, we're just discussing a procedure at this point, nothing's been, no motions been made.
He nearly done it.
Said I'd like to know. Okay. This is the discussion.
This is a discussion. This will be made with a motion and a vote, I mean.
We're having it in the open, throwing out an idea, see how everybody else votes about it, and what direction we want to go. I don't decide, for the commission, we'll decide as a whole.
Well, that's why I made the comment about the special assessment to me, if somebody wants to do that.
I believe that's a valid point.
Do it on the protest.
Commissioner Akala has. Is that, are you making a motion, then, to have them come and speak, or Commissioner Akala?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I know, I, you don't know, I can't hardly see you through the glare either.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a reasonable thing to do.
Would you like to get your motion ready to, to bring everybody back to the suite for five minutes?
Correct. Right.
Okay.
But now, don't know whether we'll be appointing that evening or not, it'll depend on how things work out, but I think it's fair to allow them, and I would encourage the people that are in default to the city for special assessment, pay it under protest. You don't lose anything from a lawsuit perspective, or anything of that sort, so it just clears the area.
I'll, I'll support.
Okay.
So, any other discussion?
No, I'm gonna read that motion, just so we got it clear. Just, gotta wrote it in parts there, so...
The motion is that we're gonna bring back all six candidates, we're gonna let them go up to the podium and speak for five minutes, tell us all about the commission, whatever they want to tell us, and then we'll have some time for ourselves to question.
Okay.
I guess one other comment that I had is that, you know, you mentioned that some of the people didn't fill out their application completely. I would like to see that in hand before the meeting, so that we are doing a comparison with the people that did submit, so it's a completed application from each individual.
Well, I, I don't know, are we, but we did have a deadline on submitting the application, are we extending the deadline for the application?
Yeah, sure.
So we're allowing them to resubmit? Or are we, are we gonna use the applications that were submitted by the deadline?
That's up to the commission.
I think we should stick with the ones that were submitted by the deadline.
Yeah, because I don't want to let other people think they might have, oh, I didn't get it in by the deadline, and now I'm gonna do it.
I don't want to have ten more applicants.
Right.
As a surprise, but, but I think we should give them the opportunity to, if there's anything additional...
To answer questions.
If there's anything additional they want to submit, along with their application, they could do that prior to the meeting. Or, or, yeah, if they want to go back, if there's questions they missed, if you want to resubmit that, that'd give us time to review that prior to the meeting.
Everybody have a copy of their application?
I'm not trying to, but in the commission, I guess, it's important to make it quick. I just, in all these applications, I think they should probably be revised, because each of your commissioners should have read all the applications, so you get five points for this, five points for that.
That's right.
Correct.
I'm hoping that all of you just turned it in to Joe, and that's why he's making this recommendation, is that, I mean, I don't even want to ask, but Joe has that information, how it was rated, and that's how you eliminated four of us? I'm just asking if that happened.
I'm listening to comment, but I'm not in the meeting.
Well, I wish it would have happened, or it did happen.
You, you know how these commissions are going?
Right.
Have a dialogue, these things will go on for hours and hours and hours.
I agree, that's why, that's why that forum used to happen was great.
Okay.
Sir, answering a question is different from debating, nobody was debating you, he asked me a question.
It starts with a question, and then it turns into a debate, I experienced that the last meeting, I debated for nine minutes, when I should only listen to public comment through three minutes, and that's why I'm looking at public comment in three minutes, because it just drives these meetings, this information gets thrown out there, then it has to be corrected, it just, it's, it's not the way these meetings work. Email, email the stones of other ways to, you know, comment to officials and departments.
Are we still discussing the motion?
Yes.
I would, I would like to just keep the information we have as submitted right now, without having them change it, as I feel it would give the impression that other people might want to fill it out. Well, I'm saying, well, if they got a chance to edit their information, I didn't even get a chance to turn it in, so did I have more time to fill one out?
That makes sense.
So I'd like to adhere to the deadline we had, with the information we have, and then with the motion you made, to, with the information in hand, to let them speak, and then we can ask them questions based on their answers, and then their, their comments. Right. I mean, that, that's my input on that, just, I don't want to give people the impression that we're reopening the application process.
I, I agree with that, you know, but, you know, at the same time, you know, I think if you missed a question, or if you left one blank, it shouldn't be a disqualification.
No, no, I'm not saying that at all, in that, when they have the chance to comment...
I mean, well, they're just, you know, I mean, if, like, question seven, if there's any other comments or information you want to provide to the mayor or state commissioners...
They, they would have an opportunity to do that.
No, or a blank is a valid answer, right? So, I mean, they shouldn't be disqualified, you know, fill it out, is all I'm saying.
Call the motion?
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Next up, under new business, we have the July fourth, twenty twenty-one fireworks display.
Yes, this is the proposal we get from Steel Bower that puts on our fireworks each year. This is to, they, actually, in the old days, the electric crew used to light them off, and before that, the volunteer firemen lit them off, and luckily, nobody was ever killed. But now it's all electronic, and this company comes here and sets everything up, and shoots off the display, and I think the general feeling last year was a really nice display, it went a lot longer than I thought it normally goes, and so they're, um, they're proposing to do the same show, very similar show to last year, with a two-hundred-dollar increase in cost, and that's a line item in the Dr. Mary Cretins, um, fund that she donates to the city every year, that she wants to pay for the fireworks.
I think that's, that's just under what we had in the budget for that, too, if I'm not mistaken. I think we had sixty-five.
Yeah.
Six last year, we upped it a little bit, you know, to add anticipation, so...
Yeah.
And they, they do a really good job.
No, I had, I had good comments about it, and I think everybody enjoyed it last year, and I think it's a good operation, so...
Unfortunately, it didn't go up like the price of lumber did.
Thank goodness, thank goodness it didn't.
You know, you're looking at twelve-five.
I'd make a motion to approve the permit for the twenty twenty-one Gladstone Fourth of July fireworks and operator contract for sixty-two-hundred dollars.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Mantila, support by Commissioner Stazinski to approve the fireworks. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up, we have the introduction of proposed works, two thousand twenty-one dash six nineteen fireworks.
Yeah, with the passing of Public Act six thirty-five by the state, it, it lists days on... Yeah, with the passing of Public Act six thirty-five by the state, it lists days on which communities have to allow fireworks in their communities, and our ordinance was the old one where it was just listed as the holidays and that the state's newer law, I think the law is a couple of years old.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, Ron wanted to update it so it reflects what the state law says, and so that would be. As it's written out, Ron couldn't be with us tonight, he has a blue bug, he woke up this morning, not feeling very good, so. Anyway, if you look at the five dates, it has December thirty-first until one AM on January first. So that would be the New Year's celebration. Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until eleven forty-five PM on each of those days. June twenty-ninth to July fourth until eleven forty-five PM on each of those days. July fifth, if that date is a Friday or Saturday, until eleven forty-five. And the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until eleven forty-five.
So if I'm reading this correctly, this allows more time, correct?
Yes, but from my understanding, and Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, that there were communities that were outlawing fireworks, and the state stepped in, and they wanted to let everybody have their chance to.
Correct.
Allow fireworks.
Correct, if your community doesn't have anything on the books as far as a local ordinance, then fireworks can go anytime, whether it's a holiday or not. You have to have a local ordinance with, at a minimum, you know, to, to allow for these dates. And included in your packet was the old one, and you can see where it's redacted. The state, back then, declared, you know, the national holiday, meaning these legal public holidays, and so now it, it has changed to defining it just to these five. Where there were ten, ten on the previous ordinance, or on the, I guess, the current ordinance right now for us, but. And that's at, that was at a minimum when this was passed several years ago, that's what the state said was the minimum you had to allow, so. Yeah.
And the noise, when you got dogs, it's like.
That's a whole nother issue, yeah, so.
So, so these are the days we have to have, can we have days in addition to this then?
Right, if, as, if the local community wanted to add additional days, you could, but this is what you have to have at minimum.
I'd like to put my birthday on there.
So, from my understanding, if a community had voted that they don't want fireworks in their community, that's, ordinance has been repealed, you have to allow it on these dates.
Right, right. Yes, we would need a motion to, this was the formal introduction, and this is available on the website, which was posted last week, that anybody can review to see what the recommended changes are there, so.
Do you need a public hearing for the public regular meeting?
Yes, the next regular meeting, so this was the formal introduction and set the public hearing for.
I think the motion is to set a public hearing for May twenty-fourth, our next regular meeting.
Support.
Motion by myself, support by Commissioner Manville, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to get your okay to use Farner asphalt sealers for the project. As stated in the staff report, our bidding process, is there anything over fifty thousand dollars? We have to do a bid proposal and go out for bids through the action guide, list in the action guide. The problem with the GSB eighty-eight is Farner's the only one in the state of Michigan right now that is pre-approved to apply that, that sealer in the state of Michigan. When we do work on the highways or the streets, I should say, we always try to use MDOT's specifications in that, and also MDOT's got a, a list of pre-approved bidders. They've already went through the vetting process of, you know, the application, they're, they're able to do the application the way it's supposed to be done, the safety requirements of all that stuff, so. I would like to use Farner, since they're the only one that. If we went out to bid, they would be the only one that we'd accept a bid from, so.
When I first looked at it, it looks like they're gonna chip seal Knight Street.
No, that's GSB eighty, actually, communities are doing that now. But that's, that's the GSB eighty-eight that's going on Knight Street.
Perry, I had a question.
Yep.
The, the GSB eighty-eight is, that's the MDOT approved procedure, correct? And this vendor is the only one who.
Only one in the state of Michigan right now that does that.
That does that. I, just my question, we're so close to Wisconsin, are they allowed to come, is there anybody out of, can we get this done from out of state?
I don't know if anybody from out of state would come, Farner's that kind of a local company, they're out of Iron River.
Okay.
They do a lot of work, a lot of this stuff, and, well, they're a big company actually, but their, their local branch is Iron River.
Okay.
They do a lot in Green, or not Green Bay, but the Wisconsin area, Minnesota and.
So they do go to other states?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there's any other vendors out there that would be able to, that were even allowed to, are we allowed to bid this out for?
Well, we could bid it out to somebody in Wisconsin, but would you get somebody, I don't know, would they be cheaper than Farner? Probably not, because they're local.
Right, they're coming relatively close, they're pretty close, they have to travel with their crew and their equipment, I understand. It just seems that with the state putting these, these guidelines and these specifications down, and then there's not much choice.
I mean, we could, we could use any company we wanted, we don't have to follow the state specs or guidelines, but, you know, they've already went through and made sure that these are reputable companies that are doing.
Right, no, I understand that, it's, yeah, to me, I guess my comment is just that, it seems like the state kinda, I'm glad they put guidelines out there, but then there's no, then there's no one that adheres to the guideline, you know, would put the product in according to the guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, any company can come in and do that, put the product in according to the guidelines, but do you know if they're doing it right?
Right, do they, do they know how to do it, do the work, are they approved, right?
Have we had anybody apply GSB eighty-eight in the past, or is that something kind of?
Not, not here, that's something new we're doing. Like I said, they use it extensively downstate, Wisconsin's a big one, Minnesota's huge on it. If you ever wanna see anything that's coming down the pipe as far as road maintenance or preservation, look at, look at Minnesota. They're, they're about ten years ahead of Michigan.
Who isn't? Not, I mean. What's the expected, I know this is a maintenance project, consider it a maintenance project?
The GSB eighty-eight is expected to give that pavement another five to seven years.
Okay, that was my question, how much?
So we're, we're probably closer to the seven year because we don't have the traffic, you know?
Okay.
So another seven years for a dollar a square foot, or a square yard, you know?
Okay.
A dollar ten a square foot for seven years, extension, that's, that's cheap.
And this will be covering all of the Knight Street and the Forest Street project and.
Basically, everything we paved in the last five years. There's some Forest Street there by the public safety that we did the water and sewer a few years ago, Dakota.
By the park.
Down there by McDonald's. And then the chip seal is Lake Shore Drive from, basically from the condos there to where we stopped on Knight Street, and there's some local streets kinda down by from Fourth to East Street, Fifth to East Street, I should say, kinda centralized and everything in the one location.
Did this come in relatively close to your estimate for budget?
Yeah.
What was the number you had, do you recall the number?
We had budget a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we're. I know it's over, but this, it seems that the way times are, any construction.
Yeah.
Any material, any, anything is, seems to be going up.
Yeah, seven thousand is a bad, over.
Any estimates we made even, you know, four or five months ago seem to be lucky for close.
Is that GSB, you know, oil breaks fine?
Yes. Yes. He, he actually did tell me that they, they did have an increase, they didn't put it in this one because it's, they've already given this, you know, price on it. And what that GSB eighty-eight does is, it basically does three things on that, on that new asphalt, it seals in the oil. So the oil doesn't evaporate out of the thing, out of the asphalt, it seals out water, and it's a UV protector. Same reason you paint, the good way it was explained to me, it's the same reason you paint a piece of furniture that's outdoors, you wanna keep the weather off it, the exact same thing.
Is that a clear sealer?
It goes down black and it turns clear.
Really, so we won't have to re-stripe or any of that?
Uh, we will, actually, if you seen they were re-stripping here the last couple of days, they're gonna hold off on that stuff, and we will re-stripe over it.
We used Farner before?
We have not, all our other chip sealing, we've used the county in the past, but the counties get too busy. Eskys use Farner, they really like them.
Is the county getting out of it completely?
No, they're, they just got too much work, they can't.
And they're not doing the small jobs anymore, are they?
They, they used to do ours in Eskenaba.
Right.
They used to do ours, Eskenaba, Monomni County, I think they did theirs too, they don't do anybody's anymore.
Right, I remember that discussion, they had notified us a year or so ago already, that they're gonna be pulling, not doing any of that anymore.
Yeah, they're, it's just getting, getting too much work.
Yeah.
So moved, to allow the public works to go forward, forego Gladstone's purchasing and bidding policy as Farner Asphalt Sealers Incorporated in the amount of one fifty, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support.
Aye.
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 Good evening, you have before you the bid package, I sent out to three vendors, only receiving one back from Bugle Contracting. I had laid out some areas for them to do, they came in with thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars, and I am recommending we go with that, with the remaining sixteen thousand seven hundred that was budgeted to be used by them on a time and material basis. They are now a local, a very local company, they just bought a building in the industrial park, so they're actually a taxpayer and a utility payer, which makes it nice. Previous two years.
I know they saved us that clearing that you had done the year when everybody else lost their electricity.
Yeah, around that Thanksgiving Day fiasco, that, that paid off big time.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this is, I remember that, that did work out well, and this is an important maintenance issue, so I would approve, I would approve the bid as presented.
Support that.
Aye.
Aye.
Unfortunately, we have several people that work for us that are, well, that's a safe and luckily fortunate for them, they're, they're getting close to retirement, and they're planning their retirement out. And I think we, this is the third one this year that we've done, because of MERS Healthcare Savings Program has quite rigid prerequisites. You have to be in a certain division, and everybody in that division has to do it a certain way, and so. On this one, the employees want to put, when they retire, whatever vacation or twenty-five percent of their sick leave they have left, they wanna be able to stick it into a medical savings account. This is written up to reflect that. It might be part of my fault, because every one that works here, I preach the benefits to having this, it's the only true tax-free way of investing.
Exactly.
And it's. Yeah.
Support.
Aye.
Aye.
This would be the resolution that you start on a project that's going to have a special assessment involved, and this is, is the North Fifteenth, or as the locals would call it, the Skeleton Road. Paving, and also U.P. Avenue, that shoots off of that, and some roads across the highway from there. The North Seventeenth and North Fifteenth, and North Fourteenth, and North Thirteenth, and also Second Avenue. The map is part of Exhibit B, and you see the, the public improvements, Exhibit A, the project will consist of street reconstruction, including reshaping, repaving, culvert replacement, ditching, and all the necessary appurtenances, and I can't say that word, attachments. And shaded area in the, and shows where the project is going to happen. The next step after, after this would be, would be to do the district and have a special public hearing on, on the district. You see, in B, this is infrastructure project estimate. I wanted to say it's an estimate also, it's because we're going to be getting, we haven't received word from the government, and we were supposed to receive word today at how much we're getting on the, of the federal money for the COVID money, and Vicky said they didn't send a dollar amount, but a hundred and fifty-eight pages of rules on how to spend it.
Oh, jeez.
She was pretty upset about that. Um, but we do know, we can, that this, they're stressing spending it on infrastructure, and so in the two weeks in between now and then, we will have a much better estimate on how, how we'd like to finance it.
Eric, got a question, is Exhibit B and Exhibit C meant to reflect the same information? The two maps? The two maps? Looking at the key of assessed parcels and then project area, those two, um, the way those two are called out, um, the maps are different. Especially down around like, for example, the North Third Avenue area?
Yeah, Exhibit B is, is, uh, shows the whole district as a whole and, uh, Exhibit, uh, C, uh, which we will have, uh, a large, a larger map available of that so you can see the actual property lines. But you can see it's pretty much, it's everybody that with frontage on, uh, on North Fifteenth Street, Hupy Avenue and.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at like, um, if you move up all the way to the, um, top there, I guess would be the east end. Am I looking at that right?
Mather Avenue?
Yep, by Mather there. There's that little zigzaggy Z Street there off of Fourteenth, three, four, Fifteenth.
Yeah.
And if you look at Exhibit B, there's more of that indicated like being done.
That's a property line.
Those are property lines?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm just confused by the, the key, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know why that was copied out.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, if somebody was looking at this online too, you know.
Yeah.
To me, it was just a bit. Okay.
It has to be, uh, must have something to do with the color she put.
Okay.
Right.
The ones we'll send out to people.
Will be.
Copies will be.
Will be clear, they will, okay.
Will have the color.
So they can distinguish between the property lines of the area and the, and then the the assessed parcels and the project area lines?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I guess. That'd be great because I can, like I said, even if somebody was looking at this online, to me, it was confusing. I'm not, I'm not disputing the zone. I was just looking at the, the, between the streets and where are streets and property lines?
Yeah, I've been working off of the, the colored version.
Okay.
What went off in the packet.
When it got copied to the packet, it made it black and white, okay.
Do we have an estimate on the amount of frontage that would be accessible there?
Uh, yes, I don't, um, I can run it into my office and get it, do. That part is what goes out when we, uh, we do the, the district part, but I can, I can get you that number if you want to get it real quick. We, we follow the Miller Tanfield, um, mold on how to, how you have to present this and everything that goes along with it and so, um, if you hold on for a second, I'll get that.
Yeah, if we could, that'd be great. Thanks.
I was gonna say, that's kind of the nickname of this project. He really pushed for this, so. And I know we did look at, uh, other options, anywhere from just grading it to putting chip seal to paving it and we're going with the best option of paving, so this will be a good road for a long time for those folks.
Barry was in high.
I was, I was in high school.
About forty-two?
Forty years, yeah.
Um, the preliminary, uh, numbers from, uh, Janice, it's right about twenty thousand feet of accessible footage. But, uh, Janice does it and then I do it and one other person does it and then we come together and we have a big map and we double check all the numbers, so. This, because Janice has been, uh, out with, uh, on, uh, she's been out with, on COVID, two different kids and so she's been gone for, what, twenty-some days now?
She's been quarantined for a long time.
Yeah, I don't even know what she looks like anymore.
She gets released Thursday. She's been working from home, but yeah, um, Thursday she gets released.
Would make a motion and approve the resolution? Would make a motion and approve the resolution?
Correct.
Support.
The public hearing is just to establish the special assessment district.
Correct.
Just for clarity, right?
Um, if I could do a roll call vote on that, um, Commissioner Ackla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
And one vacancy. Thank you.
Then it's the third, then after the district, then it's the role in which we'll have the, the names and the footage in the.
Right, the next step at the next meeting, we'll conduct the public hearing, um, if you choose to, um, declare that the district and approve that, there's a resolution, um, two to this project and then that would also then authorize and direct the assessor to, um, prepare the role, a certified role that would be presented. And, um, usually we're already working on that certified role as Eric has indicated, um, a resolution number three then would be adopted to, um, present that certified role and set a public hearing on the actual assessments, so. Um, this is to, yeah, Garner, public comment on the proposed district and you would decide that next meeting.
Just a quick question. So between establishing the district and certifying the role, is there a maximum amount of time that has, that has to happen and within?
Nope, you can, um, so Resolution Two, if you approve that next, would be that you're approving that as the district, the project district and certif, and authorizing the assessor to prepare the role. Um, Resolution Three would indicate that you are presenting that certified role to the public and you would be then setting a public hearing to receive input from the public, um, all public, not just the ones that are in the district, but they would receive notice on that, um, where they could come, give their input and then, um, uh, Resolution Four would happen for you to approve that, um, and to go forth with that the special assessment would happen and the project would go.
When is construction planned? I mean, after all of these public hearings, I'm thinking we're kind of getting.
We're looking probably, uh, if you.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes, Resolution Two and that's what I say, like, you don't have to do them the same meeting, but you can, but they're two different resolutions and normally, um, because our construction time is, um, limited in UP, you do time, um, Resolution Two and Three usually happen at the same meeting, but, but you have to complete two before going to three. The district is always first and then the assessment role.
That'll give us some time to figure out the funding that was.
Right, coming in.
Yeah, we, we thought we would, uh, hear something finite today, but they just threw out some more rules. Right, yeah. Yeah. And if anybody, uh, any commissioners are interested, uh, Kim and Renee made up a punch sheet on the, with Steve Mann on what the fu- the procedure is and the dates and everything for it. It's really quite impressive. Again, we add more notes to it every time. Um, I attended the Delta County Community Leaders. We had a meeting over at the county, county building and Ed McBroom was there and, uh, um, Representative LaFave had his, his local person was there. I don't, don't remember what his name was, but, uh, everybody was encouraged to send in, uh, questions and there was also a lot of questions, um, asked at the meeting. It was a really nice meeting. There was only, uh, about eight of us there, so we got to really talk to, to, uh, Senator McBroom one-on-one and, uh, just a couple of the, the things we talked about was the American Rescue Plan and, uh, what they knew about it and pretty much what we know, know about it and, uh, they're waiting to see what comes down from the federal government and then the state treasury will put their twist on it before it gets to us, um. One of, uh, hot topic that, a local hot topic has been, um, um, the mental health patient transport because we don't have, uh, hospital in the UP anymore and it's getting expensive for community police forces when you do have a patient, you have to transfer them down to Grand Rapids and that's two officers and day down and a day back and so, uh, they're getting legislation so that we can, uh, um, they're either gonna, looking at having a company start up that would transport them, uh, or, uh, we would get reimbursement for that. And the last thing that we talked about was, um, the disabled, uh, veteran tax exemption, which, uh, brought up that, you know, we're all for that, but the state passed it without, without any kind of, uh, money coming back to the communities and, um, so there's, they're currently in committee, the, the rule that they're, we're gonna get reimbursement for the, um, the tax loss. For anything like that that happens.
Hold your breath on that one.
No, it's, they've been, it's been in committee for like two years, but it's, it's, uh, we, it's getting quite sizable for our little community and, uh, uh, and the county is also, um, again, we want to support the veterans, but the, the state came up with a law and you know, it makes them look like the good guys, but we're paying for it and, uh. Okay, Fourth of July, we had a Fourth of July meeting and the Fourth of July committee of which we asked for volunteers and of course, there's the three of us, Kim, Jason and I were there. Um, anyway, we went over the governor's plan. Right now, we're allowed to have a thousand people at a celebration. There's gotta be six foot separation and they all have to wear masks. But she, oh, had put out her plan for us, um, at that point, we were fifty percent. Um, of the people that have, have got their, uh, their shots, as of today, we're at fifty-four, I think it said in the paper. And once we get to seventy, um, everything will be open again, so we're sort of planning as if we're gonna hit that seventy number judging by what the governor said and what the president had said. They want America to have this celebration, so. But again, nothing is for sure, just like everything that we've.
That's the bottom line, no definitive answer yet.
Yeah. I mean, that's about it.
Next up, we have city commission and committee reports. We've got a, uh, a report that states like FEMA, it's in the packet. Doing the flood insurance rate map, the flood insurance study.
Yeah, it's, the good news is, it's, uh, the portions that are considered in the flood zone, they actually learned quite a bit from the high waters of last year. It's a lot less than Gladstone, so if they, again, this is preliminary, if they go by this map, there's a lot of people that have to have flood insurance that will be given the option of whether they want to buy it or not, so it would be a savings for them. The old map, flood insurance went on the east end of town, the, um, flood map went all the way up on the Michigan Avenue in some parts of town and now from what they're showing, uh, pretty much our shoreline or the high water line from last year, other than a couple s- small little areas, there's actually, uh, area behind the wastewater plant and a couple other areas, but it, uh, if they, if the preliminary map goes, um, it's past, it'll be, uh, it could be a lot of savings for people that don't want to pay the flood insurance and I know when it first came out, it was actually holding up some people from buying homes.
Yes.
Because the flood insurance was so expensive.
Does that have any impact on the wastewater treatment expansion and?
Um, the one little area that they show, um, they have different abbreviations and this area had, was shaded gray and it's a, in an area that we're, we don't have plans for anyway, but, um, I can't see it having, uh, but we'll, we'll have that worked out prior to anything that happens there. But the good news is, it's, uh, if, if, uh, people don't want to buy flood insurance, um, in town, um, they shouldn't, shouldn't have to, so we're hoping it goes forward as it, as it is.
How often is this done?
This is only the second time that I remember in thirty years, so.
So it's not a reoccurring thing every two or three years?
No, the, this has been, we've, uh, we've gone, Rodney and I and Renee, we've gone to workshops on this over the last two or three years where they, it's gonna come out, it's gonna come out and then all of a sudden it came in the mail the other day. They didn't even let it, um, we didn't even know it was coming, it was all, all, uh, directed to, to Mayor, Mayor Thompson and I thought, I looked at that triangular box and said, that's gotta be the floodplain map, so I had to open it up. Yeah. But all the, the maps are here at City Hall and they're all rolled up right there. If anyone is interested in finding their address or looking at the new maps, they're, they're really high quality maps.
Could we put that on the website that it's available so folks know that they can come and look at it?
Yeah, I think there's a link to, uh.
There's, there's actually digital files also.
Oh, okay.
My question, is there, is that, you can, can you search for address digitally?
Yeah, the last, the last time they did the revision, it was all paper, so that's how long it's been. Um, but this time you can access, we could put the, there's a, there's a link. We could put the link right on the website.
Yeah, I see that now.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the yacht club is still on the floodplain. Yeah. If, if it was hit by water last year, you're in the floodplain, so.
Next up, uh, board and commission reports.
Um, I'd just like to, um, thank everybody for coming tonight, uh, and look forward to, uh, moving on with the process and I'd like to thank the mayor for, uh, um, keeping decorum in the meeting, so thank you and thank you all. That's all.
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, you know, I noticed over the.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, you know, I noticed over the past week or so that, uh, the bike lanes on Ninth Street were getting a lot of use, a lot of bikers out there.
Yeah, I saw that too.
It, uh, yeah, you know, it's a lot safer, I think it was a good investment. It was a little bit questionable as we were doing it, some people thought maybe that was, maybe not the best investment for the city. But seeing the use they're getting already this year, I think, I think it was a good investment. It's good to see people out. Also, uh, was talking with, uh, Community Development, Renee, prior to the meeting. And the, uh, for businesses in town, the DDA has funds budgeted for facade grants. And with the, the inflated cost of building materials, it's, that's a good way to maybe offset that and improve the, the storefront of a business and, and maybe attract more people downtown. So, uh, you, you can, actually, I think the application's online for that. If you get ahold of Renee or, or stop in a DDA meeting and see what goes on, get information on that. That'd be, it'd be a great year to take advantage of that. I do appreciate the public comment. It's great to see so many people interested in the commissioner vacancy. Certainly look forward to seeing all of you, uh, May twenty-fourth. And that's all I have.
I was thinking in terms of encouraging folks to go to the farmer's market. I don't know if everybody realizes it's open now and, uh, good to support that organization. And that's about all I had, thank you.
I'd just like to comment on, the reason I'm writing the time back is because, you know, this is a business meeting. Public comment is not a time for a discussion between the commission and somebody at the podium. Those conversations can take place other times, other places. But, um, but we need to keep the meeting short and, and get our business done. I'm not trying to be crass with anybody, but after the last meeting, you know, I, I let it go nine minutes, which is a long time. And if we had twenty people here that wanted to comment, we would be here all night. Our policy, our procedures for running the commission meetings are three minutes. So we, we had to write that back to where it's supposed to be. And it may seem insensitive, but it's the way the meeting is run. Could I add to that a little briefly?
Just, just a thought I had was, uh, and a lot of times when there's something on the agenda and someone has a question about it that they, they want to present during public comment and that's not the time for us to get in that discussion, I think it is fair for them to ask, maybe ask us to answer that question when we get to that point in the agenda. There'd be a way to, there'd be a way to get that question answered without, without having a debate or discussion or, or, you know, a long head into the meeting, especially if it relates to something that's on the agenda when there's other discussion that has to happen with that as well.
If, I mean, if, I personally could send, I mean, you can send me an email and we can add stuff to the agenda to it. We can, there came that, that thought, you know. I mean, if it's, if it's something that warrants it, but, you know, a lot of the stuff that we cover in the meetings, it's recovered at the podium, so it's not, it, it, it just needs to be limited. That puts us at a disadvantage, you know, I, this is, this is not the only thing I do. I have a lot of stuff swimming through my head all the time. And I, you know, I, I just can't keep everything current. So I need time to, to actually have a good conversation with something to refresh my memory sometime before I can have that conversation. So it's kind of a disadvantage. That's, I think that's the intent of the three minutes of not having a discussion or a debate at, at that time.
Well, you led into what I was going to say. I know there seemed to be some angst of unks, um, the public, you know, um, for how the meeting should run and we're doing stuff different. The rules of, um, procedure for a commission meeting are on the agenda and they have been. Um, and there's roles and responsibilities for both the commission and the public on how they can participate in a business meeting. And, um, I was encourage you to look at it or if you can't, I can send it to you, email it to you, whatever. Um, and that way then you can see how it's supposed to go and you don't feel like, um, you know, being not heard. Um, there's just a way to go about it and do it. And those rules have been in place, um, for quite some time. Um, also encourage you to look on the website and you can see all the packets back several years, minutes back to the seventies. Um, you know, our processes and procedures in a lot of ways, um, have not changed. And we've had many, many, um, more appointments lately, um, with the commission in my tenure with this, you know, twenty years with the city, um, recently. So you can see that the, the process and procedure has been handled in the same way. Um, and you can, you can see that in the packets in the minutes. The packets, um, on the website are the same thing that the commission is looking at. So all that material is there and you can see it. Um, uh, the, the very few exceptions would be, um, when there's a closed session, um, which is a privileged session that the, um, commission can go into on very limited cases. So, um, otherwise, you know, they're out there, you can see them, you can see exactly what it is, um, and, and educate yourself on those. And it just helps everybody so that you understand how you can play a role and we can get through the meetings, um, effectively. So let me know if you, um, aren't and you can, I can get those to you. Um, we used to put the public comment rules, um, on the back of the agenda. And I thought maybe tonight, maybe we'd go back to, you know, doing that just as a little reminder for every meeting, um, that that is. We, we got away with it, you know, over Zoom and, and things like that in the last year. Um, but I'll go back to putting that on there, so that is all I have. Thanks.